We gotta do more drills.
Yeah. Turpees everywhere.
Glenn O'Leary.
I'll take it through the steps.
All right. Um, let's see. Let's call the work session to order. Brenda, we're good? See what I did there? Okay. Um, the certified levee project update. Heather?
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you guys?
We're good.
Good. So we've got a presentation that we'll go through. Again, my name's Heather Nelson. I'm with WSB. Happy to be here tonight and excited to talk about what we've done so far and where we're going with the levee certification.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. It's great to be here again. Todd Hubmer. And I wanted to talk a little bit about, we'll go to the first slide here. This is one of the first slides we showed you as we began the effort that we've completed so far. So we divided the project into a number of buckets, these four buckets here. And the first bucket that we're nearing completion on are the concept plan and the funding strategy. Really defining the plan improvements, developing what the preliminary cost estimates would be, and working to get into the funding stream for various partners that we might have. The second phase, once we get some money, will be for the design and permitting, working with the review entities and putting together the actual design and doing some of the geotechnical work and things that are necessary to do that, and then administering those grant funds and making sure we stay in compliance with the requirements that they have. And the third bucket is the most fun, that everyone really enjoys watching, especially this time of year with a lot of orange cones as construction. So at that point, we would be under construction, which Downtown Carver has seen a lot of recently. But this will be fun, fun work, I think, and it'll be a big addition to the downtown area here. And then the last piece is the levee certification, and that's really putting all the documentation together and requirements for the federal funding process, and then working through the mechanisms with the DNR, the Army Corps of Engineers, and FEMA themselves to receive the certification. So today, I think we're about a little less than a year into the entire process. I think we started in October of last year, if I remember right. So we're coming up on one year for that first bucket, and we've had a number of accomplishments, and we'll get into those in a little bit. So Heather's gonna talk you a little bit about the concept plan that was developed.
Yep. So like Todd mentioned, the first step for this was to put a cost, or a concept plan and cost estimate together so that we could fill out these grant applications with a lot of confidence. So how we did that, a lot of these slides are going to be repeats. We'll get to where we're at with more information, but just to give you a heads up, I'm gonna probably go through them pretty quickly unless you guys slow me down and ask some questions, and feel free to do that. So what we did is we tried to define what improvements were needed based on its current configuration, and we used that using, or we determined that using existing information and studies that were previously done for the city. So we came up with a list of deficiencies as we compared the current condition of levee to the FEMA and Corps of Engineers requirements. Freeboard deficiencies were identified in several spots of the levee. Again, that's where the levee elevation, the top of the levee, needs to be at least three feet above the base flood elevations as determined by FEMA. So in this slide, the yellow areas are where we're deficient in that. Clear zone deficiencies, this is really just so that the levee can be maintained and accessed. The clear zone is identified as 15 feet from the toe of slope. Those deficiencies, some of those include trees, brush, some structures. We did a, you know, a desktop review of where those deficiencies are and determined that based on this figure here. Steep slopes, the slopes need to be maintainable. So some of the areas, the areas in this figure in red and orange are where we're finding deficiencies. So where areas where it's too steep to mow, and then areas where it's too steep to structurally hold that riprap in place. Seepage is another deficiency that we identified. Right now, the levee is just an earthen levee. There's no piping networks or anything that's going to potentially cut off any seepage when the river is high. This figure shows how water could flow through the levee. Right now, we do know that there's gravel and sand as a native material below the levee material. So there's potential for seepage, and we, so we've identified that, and we've identified correcting this deficiency with subsurface tow drains on the land side of the levee. Easements, the Corps and FEMA would require that the entire levee is under an easement maintained by the city. The city has started working with the Corps, or with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service on a few of their parcels that are located on the northern portion, north and west, north and east, sorry, of the levee to do a land swap. So we have written up easements for that. So what we did is, after defining these deficiencies, we came up with some corrective measures, and we tried to lump those into different buckets, categories. We had, we have six different typical sections that we estimated costs of what it would take to build each of those six different sections. That's how we came up with our cost estimate. We went through all these in detail at a previous meeting, so we won't go through them in detail. We did look at the cost estimate a little bit more since the last meeting, and we tried to break some of those costs up into each of the different categories of corrections. So we've got those broken up into, you know, what it potentially might take to construct that tow drain, what it might take to correct the freeboard, steep slopes, et cetera. And as you'll notice in this, too, the bottom line is a little bit more than what we've seen before. We can get to why it's higher, but really, in this slide, that increased amount is accounting for inflation that we needed to take into account when we did the bonding bill request. So that's where we're at with the cost estimate. Todd's gonna go through where we are to date with our funding strategy and the different partners that we've identified.
So to date, you might be aware that we've worked with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources to get on their list for eligible projects for the flood hazard grant mitigation program. So City of Carver is in that request right now for $10 million, and they are requesting $20 million at this point in time from the 2020 legislature, so you are on the fundable list. The one thing that we did work with, the DNR, too, is we requested that they do an income evaluation for the area protected by the levee. Typically, their grant program is a 50/50 match, so the City of Carver would have had to pay $5 million to get $5 million. But with that income evaluation for the areas protected by the levee, they have limited the contribution for the City of Carver to 2.85 million. Now, that can be actually further broken down by using, that's considered local funds, but local funds aren't just from the City of Carver. Local funds can be from the county, they can be from the watershed, they can be from other sources that we can commingle into here, and we can bring that 2.85 down. So that's one of the pieces I'll talk a little bit about here and where we're at and where we might be able to go there. Some of the activities you can anticipate coming up in this legislative session, I would anticipate there will probably be a call to the mayor or to Brent at some point during the legislative session for an opportunity to testify in front of some of the subcommittees at the Capitol. This is one of those things at the DNR, if you're on the list, they really like to hear your support, and it means a lot more coming from the elected officials than it does from your consultant. So this is one of those areas that we can be there for technical support, but we'll help you craft the message and make sure that you hit all the high points that they need to for the funding issues, but it really needs to be led by a local elected official. They really, they set the table for the elected officials. They wanna listen to you more than they wanna listen to us, so, but we can help you through that process. The next one is the bonding here. So a request has been put in to the Office of Budget and Management, or Management and Budget, and that's where the $11 million request went in. The Office requested that inflation be added into the estimate, and so there was additional money added into that estimate that brought it up to $1 million at the request of the state. Now, you'll say that, you might see that that doesn't match up with the DNR request, one's at 10 and one's at 11. The DNR anticipates that most of the costs on their list do escalate with time, so you're not capped at that $10 million participation. It's quite common that most projects, because the time period sometimes it takes for them to secure the funds goes up, that is a natural thing that you can adjust as you go through the process. The other thing I would like to note is that they're not likely to just give the City of Carver your $8 million in one shot, so they're going to say that in the 2020, maybe there's $1 million for Carver. So you have $1 million to start the design process and begin that, and any easement acquisitions you might need. But at the same time, you have to match that million as you go forward, so every dollar you spend, you have to bring your 50 cents to the table at the same time they do. We used to be able to spend out of order, where we could spend all the DNR's money first, and then the city could catch up at a later date, but they ended that practice about three years ago, so now we have to have a funding mechanism in place. So that's another piece we should have a conversation about moving forward on where that matching funds might come when we figure out how much would be eligible for the City of Carver here. So one of the things, activities to come up are meeting with legislative representatives. I could anticipate holding some meetings with your local representatives and senators, and maybe sending a letter invite to the governor as well, and maybe invite them down to Carver and show them the levee and what we're hoping to accomplish with these improvements. Lower Minnesota River Watershed District, I believe Heather had met with the district. Currently, the levee is not in the 2018 capital improvement plan for the watershed district. The district, as such, there's not a funding provision, so the activity here would be to really request that the watershed district add the levee to their CIP in 2019, or 2020, I guess now, and begin seeing if there isn't a way to fund those. So flooding was one of the major concerns for the watershed districts. This district is a little different, some of the others, because they were established to provide dredging of the navigable channel, but they're always looking for ways to fund things that can benefit the properties from which they are collecting tax revenue other than just doing dredging. So that's one of the places I think we can work on getting some amendments, and this again would be a local match and would bring down your cost participation level. Next one is Carver County. Actually had the opportunity to sit down with one of the members of Carver County last Friday, he was in my office, and we did talk a little bit about the possibility of some emergency management and grant assistance, and maybe looking at, the trail that runs on the levee is of regional significance, and maybe we can find a way to either get, it'd be nice to get county funds for that regional trail rather than state funds, because we have issues if we bring other state money in to match state money. Sometimes they're okay with it, sometimes they're not, it depends on which pocket it comes out of, so we'd have to have a clear definition of how that would work. And there might be a way to trade those monies around so that it looks like all the money comes from the county, so there's a way to position those finances to better benefit and bring down that cost on the city's perspective. I do anticipate having a formal meeting with Carver County here in the near future, so I will send an invite out to Brent and others to attend that, so they invited us to come over and have a conversation. Legislative, whoop, did we change the order here on me? U.S. Fish and Wildlife. The progress there is that the easement descriptions for the land swap have been drafted. I don't know, Brent, maybe you can give us an update on exactly where we're at in that? Have you heard back from U.S. Fish and Wildlife? So it's kinda went through the black hole of the federal government?
So just to walk that back just a bit, so there are some, what I call remnant parcels on the riverside of the levee that the city owns that it doesn't have a use for, and so one of the things that we've talked about with U.S. Fish and Wildlife is swapping those parcels in exchange for an easement along the area, along the railroad corridor, if you will, in order to balance out the trade, if you will. So WSB prepared a survey that we sent to U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and we're just waiting for a response back from them.
Are the properties that we own on this side of the, oh, what would be the south side of 40 going out of town? Is that the property that we own?
No, it's not as, it's not that far west. This is, I would say, in the downtown area on the riverside of the levee.
Okay.
So when we hear word from Fish and Wildlife, we'll have some documents prepared, we'll have some exhibits, we can show you exactly where those parcels are.
So then, developing the funding strategy to provide the matching requirements for any state funding that comes in is one of the biggest matching, biggest issues we have yet to discuss, and that really is gonna be phased. As I mentioned, I don't believe we'll get all $8 million in one fell swoop from the DNR. They know it takes a few years to develop the, to acquire the land, develop the plans, and then move forward with construction, so they'll probably give us enough money to acquire all of the easements and do the design, and then the next bonding bill or opportunity that they have that they'll send money for construction. So we might have to anticipate construction in phases. We'll see exactly how the financing comes in. There's been a lot of flooding in the state of Minnesota, so that request may actually go up. So you may be in a favorable position for either a direct allocation outside of that funding mechanism, too. So we'll see how the legislature is receptive to some of the emergency management requests that are being made. So the second piece is the design and permitting. I don't remember if you were gonna talk about this bucket or me?
Can I ask one question quick?
You can ask more than one.
I can. Well, I think I'll just start with one. When we're talking about bonding, are there a number of other cities we're going up against? Do you know what cities those are?
I don't know what the bonding requests are right now. I know what the request is from the DNR is $20 million, but they have, I think, $60 or $70 million in needs. Now-
How much?
About $60 or $70 million in needs. One of the things there is they know that some of the cities aren't ready to proceed, so they're lower on the list. They know that the City of Carver is in a position where you want to proceed, and so you're in a higher position ranking-wise than those other ones, because you're in the position where we can move ahead with some segment. The flood hazard mitigation grant program is one of those that the DNR does not want any money in their account when it comes to the next bonding year. So if you're a community that hasn't spent your money that was allocated to you in those two years, they will reallocate that at the end of the two years to somebody else that was ready to pay, to do it. And if you're not going to spend it, and several of our past clients have been, I guess they have the beneficiaries of those funds, when they haven't been spent, that they come back over and say, "We know you're under construction, you have more eligible costs, we're gonna spend the money here." So we wanna be ready. We wanna position ourselves that we have a plan on how we're gonna match those funds, and we'll have some time once the legislative session gets underway, and once we figure out how much money the DNR would allocate to the City of Carver.
You said that the DNR might do it in phases, so they give us a million, we need to match a million, right?
Correct.
So what if we use up our 2.85, is that the number that I saw?
Yes.
What happens if we use up our 2.5, 2.85, and the DNR, and the project extended costs, changes, stuff like that? What if it goes over and above our original match? Who's responsible then?
Every dollar beyond 2.85 million is the responsibility of the state.
To clarify a little bit on that, that local match and that determination, I know we talked a little bit, and we've got it in the slide, that it's based on the median household income. So it's based on the median household income, and it's a formula that the DNR does, it's like that multiplied by 2%. I mean, there's some formula. So the one thing he did talk with me about is that formula that he did was based on the 2010 census numbers. So obviously, Carver has seen a lot of growth, so that number could go up. So that's why I think some slides we say 2.5, some is 2.15, and then, you know-
It's a moving number.
It's a moving number, just to give you a heads up on that, too, so. Now, I can go through these next few slides. These are just kinda high-level, like what we have left. So this slide, like Todd indicated at the beginning of the presentation, the design and permitting really is intended to start when we start getting funding, so then you can be spending, you know, 50 cents for every dollar on any of the design and permitting. So high-level, what we would do here is we'd develop a technical advisor panel, that's our local watershed district, it's the permitting authorities, it's agencies that would help us kinda review our preliminary and final design as we're doing it, as we're going through it. We'd be permitting and providing grant administration during this phase also.
I think we'd probably also begin engaging the public in that process, too, so I think there would be some meetings to go through the preliminary design, get some comments from the public. That's really when we wanna make sure that the public is lockstep with the plan as it's moving forward, and that all their concerns are taken into consideration as we're moving through that process, because that's when we start developing changes on individual parcels, defining what easements will be acquired in all of those pieces, so we'll have to work closely with the public and keep them engaged.
After design and permitting, as we indicated, that's when we would bid and construct the project, that, you know, estimating at this point 12 to 14 months, dependent on contractor and weather and all of that fun stuff, as you know, so. The final step is the levee certification and preparing certification documents, and then securing that and secure, or developing O&amp;M plans and maintenance programs, and that we've estimated at two to four years. I think, Todd, you can talk a little bit more about that.
Well, I would hope we could do it closer to the two-year time period, because we're going to engage those individuals in the preliminary design and the design aspect. The Army Corps will be part of our technical advisory panel. We do send them all the plans and work with them on details that they like to see in the documents, so it makes it easier to certify once we submit all the documents to FEMA. We'll also acquire all of the data, like the borings and the survey data in a manner that's consistent with the federal requirements, so that we don't have to go back and recreate things. So we wanna make sure that all the documents, as we go through design, meet the federal requirements, so that we can be certified on the backside much more rapidly.
So that's everything we had to go through with you today. If you have more questions, we'd love to answer them.
I just have a couple. With the inflationary numbers, when you're figuring that out, is that inflation since we first started talking a year ago, and that gets us up to date, or is that looking forward to 2020?
When we filled out the bonding bill request, we had to estimate a construction date, which is a big guess for all of us. I think I put in 2022, and they just did a straight-up calculation on their end as far as what the inflation on that $10 million request was gonna be.
Okay, so that number should last us through 2022?
Hopefully, yep.
Okay. And then, I was also wondering, so when we started working together, how, where are we budget-wise with you all?
Where are we at? So the first scope that we started with you was to provide the concept plan and funding strategy, and so I think as far as where we're at right now, we're pretty close to the end of that first scope. So for assistance during the 2020 bonding year, we'd be looking at a different scope.
Okay. Thank you.
I had some questions. On one of the earlier slides, when you showed the cost analysis or cost estimates, there was, towards the top, a line item, estimate dollars for established clear zone. What are examples of that?
Yep. So that's a big number. What that is, a lot of that is that sheet piling that we talked about when we were putting those typical sections together, and, you know, I lumped it all into the one established clear zone, but really, all that, it is establishing that clear zone, and it's working around existing structures and existing homes where we didn't wanna be taking property, but we need to make sure that we're establishing that clear zone, so a lot of that cost is that sheet piling or potential retaining walls that we'll need to install.
So it's not any changes in property lines? It's more just the material and the labor, too?
Correct. Yep, yep. The property and the easements and land acquisition, that's estimated based on a square footage of, you know, the alignment of the levee, so that's towards the bottom, so that would be where it would be easements.
Okay.
Property.
Nope, that helps clarify it. Thank you.
And one of the things that I would recommend in the acquisition process is that, once we have a really good preliminary design, we have a concept right now, we have a preliminary design, that we begin that acquisition process. I think it's important for us to know what that dollar value is before we start construction. There has been some issues with folks using condemnation and then coming back at a later date and trying to settle these kinds of easement issues, and the dollar value is escalating greatly, so it's, I think, I would encourage us to walk through the normal processes, about 12 months, to acquire those easements, so that that piece of the puzzle is nailed down from a cost perspective. We don't want those surprises on the back end, if we can avoid that, so.
I have some other questions, just around the relationship with the DNR, which I think this is exciting, sounds like some great progress with collaboration there. What do they gain? Like, I understand our boat access is city-owned. Are we gonna have more of their support for DNR enforcement? Are they, like, is there something other than their whole, you know, objective of, you know, protecting natural resources, and I know they're a lot into education, but are there, is there other things that makes us attractive, or are the DNR gains in a project like this?
Well, in this instance, this program of the DNR, it flies, it sits underneath their emergency management arm, so it really is an investment by the state of Minnesota to reduce future damages that are incurred by the state. So in the instance that all the businesses and houses here flood, there's a great amount of damage done to people and businesses in the state of Minnesota. This program is aimed at getting rid of those reoccurring flood damages. So in essence, they're investing today to protect state investments in the future due to an emergency, and that's really the arm that this sits under. And through its history, you can see in other communities that even this last year with this flooding that we've had, have been protected as a result of these funds, so the state's not seeing those reoccurring emergency management responses, so they've probably recouped a great deal of that investment over just this last year from all those communities that typically would have flooded and had damage, and they didn't have that this year, many of those.
So this project doesn't involve anything with the boat launch, the usability of that park? That's not in scope?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
My question is, so what's the next timing with you guys? You talked about a lot of the things that you're still working on with meetings with the county, et cetera, et cetera. What's a good timeframe for when the council can expect an update on funding or other partners, et cetera? What can we expect?
Well, what I would expect for the rest of the summer, one, we'll have the meeting with Carver County. We'll probably revisit the watershed district and make a formal request from the community to the watershed for participation. We will spend some time talking to them about how that might work and how that could be structured. I've worked through those financial arrangements a number of ways. One particular watershed district was, we can't afford a half a million dollars, but they were able to put in $50,000 for 10 years in a commitment, so over some long periods of time. And I think those are some conversations we should have with them about what's an adequate level or a reasonable level, and how might that come to the city? And then, we can kinda work back that 285, and then I think the invitation of the representatives to the City of Carver, I think we should do that yet this fall, before they get into their legislative session and they're all tied up in it. I know that they've done most of their tours for the year, but it's a good chance to go one-on-one instead of having a big busload of people. It's good to get your senators and representatives here, invite them down for ice cream or something, you know? They're always looking for a reason to connect with their constituents. So I, and I think that would kinda be, really, I would see that kinda the end of scope one, and then the beginning of scope two would be the legislative session, and any attendance and participation and preparing documents and things like that for this year's legislative session, I think, would begin our new scope, so, and we can get you something. So, and we can get you something that we can anticipate what that might look like.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. I appreciate the work that you've done and I'm excited to get this going.
Thanks.
Just need some funding.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, the recreation partnership survey summary, Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Several months ago, the city of Chaska came out to meet with the council and we provided a presentation on the recreation partnership with the city of Chaska. And one of the to-dos from that was to prepare a survey. And so we prepared a seven-question survey. And in fact, it was pretty much six because the first question was, what's your address? So there's really six questions related to data. We had 193 responses. And so these are the slides. So we used a Survey Monkey tool. This is the slide data that was produced from that. You'll notice there's some that are in pie charts. There are some where there are, there was an answer box provided. So those, the website creates a Word cloud. So you'll see a Word cloud on there with, you know, the most heavily used words, the largest. We can provide a PDF of all the individual responses to the council if you're interested in looking through those. I haven't had an opportunity to look through all of those, just putting the presentation together. So the first question was, I find value in the city's partnership for resident rates at the Chaska Community Center, Town Course and Curling Center. Can see the data for strongly agree, topping out close to 60% with agree, undecided, or excuse me, disagree, undecided and strongly disagree. So looking for this to be a conversation, if there's something that you find interesting or you want to share or a note that you want me to take. What we're really aiming for here is kind of a strategy or direction, I guess, from the council on how you want me to approach a conversation with Chaska as it relates to renewing the agreement, amending the agreement, discontinuing, discontinuing the agreement, et cetera.
Brent, can we, so for question one, number one, do you know what percentage of folks were from Carver?
It doesn't provide that. I mean, it just literally provides the addresses, so.
Okay.
I, I haven't done the work to go through all the responses and differentiate.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Second question is, I find value in community events that take place in the city of Carver, such as the vehicle fair, movies in the park, concerts in the park and so on. And so this is one where, some of these are longstanding events, but it's essentially they, do the logistics, provide the support for an event that's, and again, all instances, these are free events. You can see the corresponding data. Fourth, this is our first Word cloud. So what community events would you like to see organized that are currently or not being offered, currently not being offered? Isn't a ton of information here that I pick up on farmers markets, kids activities, fitness classes, et cetera, family-friendly. Where do you prefer to attend recreation program offerings such as yoga, art classes, archery, geocaching and so on? This one I found to be probably the most interesting because I, I think we've been relatively successful, especially based on this data on the resident rates and the community events. Some are more successful than others. I think the biggest question in the partnership has been the recreation program offerings. And so this question and the next question really kind of get at that. And kind of a mixed bag here of, does it matter location in Carver, location in Chaska? There are some competing interests, whether someone will work out at Lifetime for a program or they'll go through community ed. So this is an area that would be extremely helpful for me to get feedback from the council on how you envision that going forward. And then the corresponding, what recreation programs would you register for if offered? And you can see the corresponding answers. Again, these are, the Word clouds just focusing on the largest response. So like yoga, adult, those are, would be the words that were used most often in responses. And then the final question, what are your thoughts for moving forward? Should the council consider renewing this partnership? What changes would you like to see if any, so you can see the corresponding answers? So not a lot to the presentation, just wanted to share the data and then get some direction from the council.
So I think the answer to question number five surprised me a little bit that the greatest percentage of folks who participated in the survey didn't have a preference of Chaska over Carver, which is kind of how I feel. But it surprised me that there were a bunch of other folks that way. I think from me and kind of starting the conversation, this is something. And I think with this survey, we definitely have the data to support it. But this is a relationship that I want to continue. I think that the resident rates are of value to folks. I think there is a need, and I think now that we have some community space, it would be cool to see a little bit more programming back in Carver. But again, this fifth question tells me that I don't, I think where it makes sense, that we don't have to go overboard in having 307 events in Carver when we might get six families who are interested, so.
Right, I mean, I guess my guidance, I mean, I agree with everything you just said. Eighty percent of people said they found value. That's overwhelming, so yeah, we should continue it. I think we should request that there are events in Carver. And I guess I would look to, I mean, it's hard to tell from the Word cloud here, but if we had some of the responses here, some of the ideas of what people were most interested in, maybe mix it up between what's offered in Chaska and what's offered in Carver. Because I, I have to believe if Carver residents said, it doesn't matter, I'll go either way, I bet there are some Chaska residents that would feel the same way.
I guess my only concern and question has ever been how many are being, how many classes or programs or events are being offered in the city of Carver? And if we look to question three here, it does say that we find value in the community events. And majority was strongly agree or agree. And so we filled up that pie chart with wanting some things going on here. I think the partnership for the resident rates has worked out very well. It seems to be of great value and people are using it and enjoying that. For the, for the dollar amount that we do spend with Chaska to receive that rate, I do think that now that we have a new building, I'd like to see some additional offerings here. I completely understand when we had no space or very limited space, that that's something that we just couldn't host. But I just want to reiterate that the events, having some events here is great and possibly freshening up the ones that we have. I live right next door to where they did the yoga in the park. It was very popular. It was 90 degrees out. There was no way I was going outside to go do it. But the people there seemed to still be smiling.
People said it was like free hot yoga.
Yeah, yes. So I guess, again, those are my only comments. I, I think the partnership is working out well for the, for the reduced rates there as residents. Again, I would just like to see a little bit of programming and events coming back, back here. And I think the, the survey has shown that as well, so.
I think it's been an overwhelming success. It's just from the responses that over 80% of people agree with, that are using the partnership for the community center, town course, curling center and other events. Granted, we entered into it without a city hall or without our main area that we were using for our programs. Now that we have that back, we'll have the community space there that we can use. I think that'll open up a lot of stuff. I think the city of Chaska will like the fact that, I don't know, yoga, dance classes and stuff like that can be in the city, in the new city hall area. I think expanding the Carver's participation and location will, I think we'll get more and more use out of it just by having a facility that people can use. But no, I'm really happy with what we've done so far.
I liked the presentation. I have a couple of questions, but I also really support the program too. I think it's an interesting perspective seen on that question five, how the programming, I always was very focused on where is it being held? You know, what building, what zip code? And now it looks like really the focus should be what is the program and how is the facility? So I think us now having more to offer too and share our facility just kind of reinforces that it could be either zip code and the programs would be used. Can you flip through questions one, two and five? Because I noticed something with question two.
One is the address.
One is the address.
Okay, so question here on Q two, oh, so it skips right to Q two, okay. I did notice 25% disagree, but will you flip to question three, please? No, between disagree and strongly agree, if you combine the two. And here it's 13. I think though, a big difference in those type of programs is the cost. So just my takeaway is as much as we can do to either subsidize a program or keep the cost down, I think you get more disagree and strongly disagree on the programs that cost money. There's a, only a total of 13% strongly agree or disagree when it's a free program.
You lost me.
So they're, they're asking, do you find value in two different questions? Do you find value in the free stuff?
Between what question? So, yeah, so I, I get what you're saying, yeah. So question two is more broadly about resident rates, meaning you got to pay for something, right? You got to pay for a community center membership, you got to pay for the town course.
And a larger dollar amount.
Right, there's a dollar amount there, but there's still a high value perception there. But question three is about value in the community events that are free. And she's saying the disagrees are less on that answer when it's free. So your point is more free or lower-cost activities?
Yes.
In Carver?
In Carver.
I think the whole program, not just Carver, just the collaboration between the whole programs that are offered. Well, I guess, no, it would be whoever responded. I don't know the addresses, but, but yes, thank you, Joy, for summarizing that.
I get you. I didn't see that. I think I understand what you're saying, but I would caution you towards, I, I, who doesn't like free stuff, right? You know, so, but if we're going to try to appease the minority who may not be in favor of this, regardless of what it costs, by trying to lower things, that's going to result in a higher price for the city in general. And if we're going after this 8%, it might not be the wisest spend. So just.
There might be another way to look at this too when we're looking at the difference between question two and three. When we're looking at the strongly disagree and disagree on question three, where they're having community events and it's come way, you know, it's a lesser percentage of people who have a disagreement with it. Maybe that has something to do with the cohesive nature of doing something in your own town as a larger community event too that could be bringing some of that down.
The type of event.
I mean, it's all speculation here, right? We, you know, we can't pick these people out and say, you know, what did you exactly mean? But there's a couple of ways I think that maybe these can be interpreted too.
Yeah, I think you'd learn a lot by looking at the open-ended questions about some of the suggestions of the things that people would like to see and trying to get some of those in Carver.
I would be interested in the PDF if you could.
So I'll get that prepared and send it up to the council.
Super. Do you have what you need from us on this?
So I, tell me if I'm wrong, I feel like I'm hearing, so I look at this partnership in three pillars, the resident rates, the community events and the recreation programs. I'm hearing to kind of pursue continuing that, but there probably will be some tweaks in how we approach some of these. Is that fair or should I be looking at this differently?
Tweaks in how we approach, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
Tweaks in, like some of the, like, you talked about, like, program, like freshening up certain things. Like it's a, it's probably tweaks in execution, but not necessarily tweaks in the agreement. Is it, am I hearing that correctly?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, I think so, yes. That helps? Okay. Moving on to the draft 2020 general fund budget, Mr. Merrick?
All right. So 2020 budget, so as we get into this, sometimes I speak too much in analogies, but I like this one. We have all the ingredients here for making a salad. You can tell me if there's too much bacon, too much croutons, there's carrots. So think about this as, we got all this stuff here. So this is a collaborative process.
You know I love your analogies.
We got all the stuff. So this is the first draft.
Salad.
Because I think, and I think that's really important because as a staff, we put this together with not a lot, not a lot of impact from the council. And so I don't want you to look at something and feel like, well, why isn't that in there? Or there's too much of this and not enough that. This is, this is our attempt to try to mirror what we hear from you throughout the year. And so if we miss something that's not intentional, it's just give us that feedback and we can adjust. I think one of the hardest parts to understand when it comes to, when we talk about the general fund is understanding actually what it is. And the general fund is basically all the things that you see on the right-hand column. It's our debt service, just for the items related to those pieces below it. And so it's not the water, it's not storm sewer or sanitary sewer. And so property taxes, our state aids, our building permits, other fees and fines fund that. And so even though we do two things, they're really two different businesses. And that's why we call them the enterprise fund. They're separate businesses, if you will. And so that's how we explain there. So the enterprise fund, that'll be the monthly utility bill, connection fees from new developments and those pay for water fund, sanitary and storm water. And even when it gets back, I'll go back a slide here. So like, for instance, salaries and administration or planning, part of those salaries are prorated against enterprise funds for the work that Aldo or Aaron does within those enterprise funds. For a position like Brian's, he's got some in the general fund and then some in water, some in sanitary sewer. And so that's kind of the guts of it. But it's really important to kind of understand that in the way of how this relates to property taxes in one bucket. And then when we get further into the fall, all utility bills and rates affect the enterprise funds.
So since we just talked about the levy and coming up with two-point-something million from a city perspective, which fund would it be in?
So the certified levy, you can, you could frankly look in two areas. It's kind of undefined. We've been funding it out of stormwater.
Okay.
What you could do is if you really felt like you wanted to make a push to do a certain project, you could fund that out of the general fund. But right now it's situated within stormwater because a lot of the city's stormwater infrastructure is related to the levy system.
Okay, that's kind of what I heard.
Yes.
Okay.
So our budget schedule, tonight we're reviewing the, the general fund draft. Some critical dates, so September 16th is the certification of the preliminary levy. So that's the maximum, so that's the maximum amount of property taxes that you'd collect to balance the budget. Doesn't mean you're approving the budget in September, just means this is the most that you'll collect with property taxes. So really have quite a bit of time, six months, to understand the general fund. But what you're doing is you're sending a cap on your spending as it relates to property taxes in September. And what they'll do is we'll set that rate, we'll get it to the county. The county will prepare some calculations and send out what's called a truth and taxation notice. That notice will provide a proposed property tax to residents based on the levy, preliminary levy that you set and the tax rate that is the result of that. And then provide people with their proposed taxes. And then we'll have a truth and taxation hearing your first meeting in December where they can comment on that and you can take all that information and then make your final tweaks to the budget at the last meeting of the year on December 16th. So again, here's the process. We started building this budget in June and July or August. We're presenting this for council discussion. On the 16th, we'll set that cap so we can go to that peak. We can't go any higher, but we can go lower throughout the remainder of the fall. We'll look at budget conditions. Residents are mailed their truth and taxation statements in October. It's been getting later and later, so now they've been getting to November. We get to our truth and taxation hearing in December. We get to our truth and taxation hearing in December. We have in the past had truth and taxation and considered adoption of the budget and tax levy in the same evening. But we've, the last couple of years, we've gotten away from that. It seems to be a better process to take that information and then come back as opposed to inviting people to come out, taking their comment, and then adopting the budget in the next, with the next gavel. So this provides a little bit more wiggle room for the council to kind of take in that feedback and then see if they're, yeah, there, there's a couple tweaks we want to make based on this feedback from residents. So some big picture items as it relates to the 2020 budget, just under $15 million in new construction value. That serves to kind of dilute those additional costs as a growing city. We're going to have additional costs. And so it's about balancing those costs with growth. We do have a residential market value increase of 10%. So the county assessor, who we contract with, they're responsible for maintaining a certain ratio based on home sales. So they have to be within 90% of the, the home sales within certain neighborhood, within all neighborhoods. And so what you'll see is not every home is going to go up 10%. Some might go up 5% based on kind of what their neighborhood is doing. Some might go up 20%. Some might go up 15% because they finished their basement. So you're not going to find, you know, a whole grouping of homes that have gone up 10%. But on average, our values have gone up by 10%. We're going to see new debt service in this budget related to the street project and the equipment certificate. Excuse me. We don't have any new, excuse me, we don't have any full-time staffing included or proposed in the 2020 budget.
Did I see a full-time janitor?
No.
It was in the not included in this budget slide.
Got it.
It was there, though.
And then one of the pieces, and this is this kind of a, something to talk about, not necessarily in this presentation, but going forward, is you'll see that the street maintenance budget is still at around $60,000. And as we move forward, we're going to have a greater need for that. We've, we've put in some heavy lifting, heavy, heavy lifting on reconstruction. But one of the pieces, and Brian can speak to it if you have deeper questions, but there has been really a move from getting away from seal coating and getting into mill and overlay. And either Dan or Brian can get into the, the pros and cons of that. But you're seeing a shift amongst many cities from getting away from seal coating. Actually, I'm just going to break away. Brian or Dan, can you, can you just speak to that and why cities are, are moving away from seal coating?
Don't everybody jump at once.
Paper scissors.
Yeah. So one of the things we're, we're recognizing with the seal coating, the old practice where you put the fine rock down and sweep it is a lot of times it'll, it'll, it scrapes up after you plow, ends up in people's yards. We end up doing a lot of cleanup and stuff. It does prolong the life of it. But if you maintain your streets, your crack ceiling, you can get quite a lengthy time out of it. And then you can mill them, just a inch and a half mill, and then you overlay it with new. And then you kind of take care of that. So it extends it even longer. And we're seeing that it's probably a better manner to go. You don't get quite so many residents that are upset with the seal coating process.
So is the, is the request that we probably need to look at bumping up that fund simply because mill and overlay is more expensive? We have more roads? We have more roads that are getting older? Combination there of, what do you think?
A combination of all those pieces.
Okay.
Mill and overlay happens after 10 years. Or seal coating, you do it every, you know, five or six. So you kind of save a little bit there, but it is a little bit more expensive. But I think you end up with a better road over a long period of time. There's still maintenance that you do, the crack sealing, and you'll have curb replacements and some patches that you'll have to do. But so, and we're adding, we're adding streets all the time. So. Do you have anything to add?
So moving into the revenue overview, a major piece is local government aid had an increase of about $35,000. LGA, which is commonly referred to, is what I'd call consistently inconsistent. So there have been some pretty significant swings in that amount of funding. In the late 2000s, there was significant cuts to local government aid. And in fact, I think Carver had some significant pieces. And that frankly was, I think, the first time, I think Christie might be able to shed some light on this. I think that's when the city had an, the original partnership with the city of Chaska, when the LGA cuts came, the city cut that as one of the kind of low hanging fruit to balance the budget after local government aid was taken away. And so one of those things to keep in the back of your mind, this 148,000 kind of restores those two, late 2000 funding, funding levels. But it, it has dropped significantly. At one point, I think we were close to about $40,000 that we were getting from local government aid. So this is something to think about as maybe not always a really reliable source of revenue. We are anticipating new housing permit applications to be strong. We've typically, we try to be pretty conservative with our revenue estimates for permitting because that can fluctuate. And in the same way, frankly, that local government aid can. We have the possibility of having some commercial projects in, in 2020. Sounds weird to say that now. 2020. So we do feel like there's some room for growth in that revenue area. But if we fall short, we don't want to be in the position of coming back to you and saying, okay, we have to cut in these areas. And so we do think that there's some space to grow in that area. We do contract for fire protection services with Dogren Township and San Francisco Township. And so the way that formula works, as our population and market value increases and number of calls, their contributions toward that contract are going to decrease. We're just going to pick up a bigger share. And so we're going to have a steady decline in the amount of revenue that we have from contracted services, which kind of, we've been hugging pretty close to that 80% of our, of our revenue related to property taxes. We're at that same amount in this draft of the 2020 budget. And then again, utility rates for water, sanitary sewers, stormwater are not funded through property taxes, and they're not included in this budget that you're seeing tonight. So an overview of the revenues, again, around 80% for property taxes, fees, licenses, and permits that relate. The heavy piece in there is the building permit revenue, aids and grants related to local government aid, fire contracts. I did list the special capital fund. We had been using that for the last several years. There aren't any contributions from the special capital fund in the 2020 budget. And then correspondingly, the 2020 draft expenditures, debt service remains as our, our biggest expenditure within the general fund, followed by public services, community development, fire, and admin. And feel free to, this, this is meant to be kind of a conversation. So if you have questions related to any of these slides, feel free to jump in at any time.
I have a question. When we're looking at the debt service being at 30%, at what point are we going to be getting nervous that our debt service is getting too high compared to what, what, what the other outputs are that we have?
What the other whats are?
The other outputs that we have here with the public services. I just, debt service is, is this a typical number that the city has carried in the past? Or is this jumped significantly with the city hall and all of this?
It's jumped significantly. I don't have a, a year-over-year analysis to compare. But when we go through our long-term financial plan with Abdul, that's a question that I can queue up for them and get them to speak to how we land as far as our peer cities. I, in the audit, they, they do a debt service per capita number, and I just can't recollect what that number is.
It was in that document that the guy from the bonding.
My just question is if we, with, with our rating, we want to keep obviously the ratings that we have. Are there, is there a point that we become, I guess hurtful to those ratings if our debt service is getting too?
I think we were in a good range, but you're right. What is that?
Yeah, we can, we can dig a little bit more on that.
Thank you.
A couple pages ahead of where you're at. It's got the 2020 debt service, and it just goes back for, till 2017. And on years past, we, we usually go back just three years, just expanded back about four or five years.
When I get to that slide, can you queue me up?
Yep.
So one of the, the strategies that we were looking to employ this year, so this is our 2010 refunding. One of the big pieces within this is the fire station. And so we have what amounts to be three years left. And so the, our current payment strategy is what you see on the left with a, a payment in 2022 of 82,000. What we're proposing, what this budget contemplates is basically splitting that into three equal payments. So it doesn't provide the debt service relief that you'd see currently in 2022, but it does provide $50,000 worth of relief in 2020. And with the new debt service that we're taking on with the equipment certificate and the 2019 project, that'll be something that the council would like to consider. And so this is, I think this is the slide you're talking about. And what was your question or comment on?
If you just extend that back about another four or five years, we can kind of see how it's tracked the past years. And the percentage isn't listed here.
But the percentage of the overall fund?
Yep.
That's what he's saying.
Slide doesn't show percentage. Yeah. So I think what we're asking for is on this kind of slide, not only could we go a couple more years back, but on the bottom, that total debt service levy as a percentage of the total fund.
Sure.
Um, can I go back to your previous slide on this balanced payment strategy? We can do that without penalty?
Correct. So we're, the, when I talk about payment, it's not payment to the bank.
Okay.
It's, well, I consider payment as our payment to our tax levy. So the funds within the, within the debt service fund, we have enough cash on hand to make the payment to the bank.
Okay.
When I, when I use the term payment in this, this is payment as in we need to collect tax levy. So I can change that term, but it's a, it's basically collecting levy dollars to make the payment.
Okay. All right. Good.
Be gladly paid Tuesday.
How do we get off of that? All right. Okay.
And then the, on this slide, just wanted to point out, so the Levi Griffin Road project, that's kind of steadily coming on us in 2021. We'll have to start paying on that. Now the, there's some additional data I'm going to collect for that. But you won't, that'll be kind of a net positive in that we'll be collecting property taxes that'll be used toward the general fund from Mills. So there, they'll, the property taxes or proceeds from Mills, payment of property taxes will cover this in addition to probably some additional funds. So we should be in, in quotes, good shape. Now, the hope is that we can get some of those other properties to, to develop, and we can get that debt service payment on. So all that money is going toward the general fund. But as it relates to just paying off that debt service for Levi Griffin Road, we'll have Mills, will be decertified out of that TIF district. That debt will be paid, and they'll be paying into the, the general fund. Does that make sense to everyone?
Does. Well, Lakeview Industries, or that's a TIF district as well.
Different TIF.
Correct.
What's the JCP 255 or 275,000? What's that?
Where are you looking?
On the 2022, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the next slide.
This one?
Yeah, that one. That's what I thought you were talking about. Sorry.
So that's, so that contemplates the, the city's share of the improvement of Jonathan Carver Parkway.
Okay. Got it. Okay.
It's based on kind of our, our debt service, based on other projects that we've done. There's an immense amount of work that we have to go, we'll have to partake in, related to the design of the county's cost share policy. And there's some wrinkles within their cost share policy that I think are worth exploring, that I, I don't think are in the best interest of the city. They're obviously in the best interest of the county. And so Dan, Lonnis, and I have been talking about that quite extensively on areas that we're going to want to sit down with county staff and, and either pursue, have, having them make changes, or in some cases, maybe going to the county board and saying that this cost share policy needs to be amended because there's just some areas that don't balance out as it relates to the city's cost for investment in the county. So just a little teaser on something to, to come going forward. Our debt service levy history, here you can see where we've gone back at least till 2016. In the, what we asked for, or when we certify the levy are basically in two buckets, the debt service and the general levy. So the debt service levy, you have limited choices. When you've taken out a bond or proceeded with a bond sale, you adopt a resolution promising to pay essentially the payments on that. And so you're really tied, for the most part, to what the debt service levy is and what you need to make the payments. Here you can see that tracking going back to 2016. The general fund is where you have the most autonomy in determining where you want city resources to go. And so getting into the, excuse me, the general levy area, again, the city provides contracted services to Dogren and San Francisco Townships. The 2020 budget does reflect the new debt service related to that fire engine, and that's about 650,000. The fire department is planning to come with specifications for your review at your September meeting. Prorated, that's about $67,000 a year through 2028. The city for quite some time now has been increasing the relief for the pension contribution by $100 per year of service for the relief association. So that'll go from 2307 to 2407. And then the firefighters are paid per call and by, on training paid by hour. And the $12 to $1240 represents essentially what the full-time employees would be getting for an increase, roughly around 3.3%.
Is that a typical pay for a fire department our size per hour? I mean, I wouldn't have any clue what fire departments around the area would make per hour.
I couldn't answer that right now. We can get some data.
Yeah, it's more curiosity than anything.
I have feedback too around that. Or I'd like to see, when is the last time we increased that hourly rate? Is it's?
We've increased it.
It was?
Every year. We at, this has been a number of years ago, but at, I would say four or five years ago, there was a really big push at the state level to maybe consider increasing the minimum wage. And I, they might have even done it. But at that point, we were in danger of being below what minimum wage was. And so we made a concerted effort, probably more, I think they've been in like 50 cent increments the past year, tried to make it more or less arbitrary rather than going 50 cents, trying to make it relatable to something else that we're doing. But let me get that data. But we've done a, a pay increase for the, for employees in the fire department, I would say for at least the last five years.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
Law enforcement, and this is an area I mentioned to, I think it was the mayor today. One of the things I want to do is have the sheriff's office come out to a future work session. We have some time and start talking about the, the FTEs. There is a significant change in the 2020 budget, or at least the proposed budget. And it's one thing to talk about the finances. I'd like to have representatives from the sheriff, sheriff's office talk about the, you know, the actual practicality of what that looks like and what the council can expect to see. We have reached out to Hancock Township, Dogren Township, Victoria, and Cologne related to trying to figure out a way to partner for that extra 0.35. We haven't had any takers. The Lake Town Township agreement ended, and so we're looking at this increase of about $44,486. And then just wanted to point out, it's kind of a, a one-off, but about three or four years ago, Steamboat Days was really struggling. And so the city agreed to pick up law enforcement coverage related to that. And so there's $4,500 in the 2020 budget related to covering additional shifts for Steamboat Days. Any questions?
So it, with the sheriff's office for the nighttime officer, it's all or nothing if we can't find someone to pick up that 0.35%?
It's been inferred that way. We haven't asked that specific question, like what happens if we don't fund it? But every situation that they've been in the past reflects that sentiment of, they, they say they can't, they can't pay someone to work 0.65. They have to fund the full deputy. But I can.
They don't have any 0.75? Just asking. I just, for me, the, adding $45,000 worth of night, nighttime coverage for 0.35 just seems a lot for a town our size to need that much coverage for that dollar amount. I, I mean, obviously I prefer the 1.65. Um, I, I mean, obviously I prefer the one point six five if we can find a partnership, but I realize we can't make other communities take part in that.
I have a bit of opposing view on it, where I definitely would support a two point oh. Just when you look at the sheriff's report from the last few months, and we've just, I know typically summer is hired for petty crime, but with the increase in thefts and just with the lot of new streets, lot of new neighborhoods, um, I would support a two point oh FTE.
This has been going on for as long as I've been on the council. And, um, the sheriff's office does a great job in, on their calls. The way they split their shifts, it's tough to find that point, that three point five or point three five. Yes, with the way we're growing and, um, the sheriff's reports from the last, um, last couple meetings, um, there is a need for, for a greater presence in Carver. Just, it's the nature of growth. And if you look at other co- communities around us, that, um, well, Chaska has their own force, um, they have a lot of police presence. I mean, there's a lot of mutual aid calls and stuff like that that go out that they'll help out, but, um, I don't have a problem at all with bumping that up to two oh.
Well, and I think, I mean, this is part of why Brent would like to get sheriff's office in front of us to really help us understand what that means, right?
I'm sure Jason and the crew would be more than happy to come out and, uh, and, um, give us their case.
Right. And I don't have an issue with bumping up to two point oh either. I do want to hear it from the sheriff's office.
I want to hear what we're getting at.
With all due respect, I don't know that any of us sitting up here has the expertise to say we need an extra, yeah, point three person.
Yep.
But I know, I've always, um, thought it's strange when you think typically, stereotypically perhaps, you know, the crimes more likely to happen in the evening, that we have our one FTE during the day. So I think...
That's required by the sheriff's office in order to have the night officer, so.
Yeah.
Is that still the correct, that you have to have the full-time day in order to have night patrol?
I think it's said that in a roundabout way. I haven't asked that specifically, but...
Otherwise, no one, they'd never have, no one would ever hire a daytime cop and you just have them all at night.
But what I'm getting at is...
Yes.
I can support it with the data and someone who, perhaps.
So, thank you for all of your viewpoints. They're not the same as mine, and that is just fine. My only, um, thing I want to be cognizant of then is we look forward in this budget is that all of these little things that add forty-five thousand here and fifty thousand there and sixty thousand there add up to a really big number. So I just want us to look really carefully when we say, oh, it's, it's just this much, it'll be, it'll be fine. How many of these just this much do we have adding up? So that's, that's where I'm at, I'm looking at those.
So kind of to tag along with that, I did not know that the forty-five hundred dollars for Steamboat Days coverage from the sheriff's department was not a pass-through. I thought that the Lions was still paying for that. Is that something that's possible to resume?
So the Lions and the Steamboat Days Committee, which are the same and different, so the Steamboat Days is a subcommittee of the Lions that also has different volunteers from around town. So we already pay for the fireworks and then we manage all of the goings-on, yeah, and the bans and all the goings-on around town. Um, I think that being, the thought is of all the, the money that we output for the different activities that go on through that, that this one, because it is a community event also, that that was how the city came about to be paying for that. I know Brent, you maybe have a little more background on, on that conversation and why we took over, or the city took over the forty-five hundred. But again, the Steamboat Days with the money we raise and things like that outputs a significant amount of money towards that already. So for community safety, I think that's why that was the one that was chosen to, to head off to the city to help pay for.
Uh, so moving on, a couple of strategic plan initiatives. So this was something that the council discussed during your goal-setting retreat is moving forward, the community survey. So the strategic plan called for that to be completed in 2020. Uh, you have a representative from Decision Resources that'll be able at your September third work session to walk through what that looks like and the process involved with that. Uh, another, uh, plank of your initiative or strategic, strategic plan initiative was to look at kind of making Jonathan Carver Parkway another corridor or gateway into the city, kind of the new Broadway, if you will. And so, uh, putting together a task force or steering committee to look at a design landscape plan that can be integrated into, um, that road construction project. So that would be through Bolton and Mink and then led by Aaron Smith. Uh, insurance, um, I was just, I think commenting, I think it was to maybe council member McKnight or Mary Johnson, it's for, so for the past two years, uh, we've had health insurance premium increases, uh, that we ended up getting down, but they started off at like thirty percent and twenty-eight percent. And so now getting twelve percent. It's sad when you think like twelve percent doesn't seem like a lot. So that's, we think they can go down lower, but we think that's the cap. The city provides a high deductible insurance plan, uh, providing a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible for single, five thousand for family. The city covers fifty percent of the deductible. The premium is paid a hundred percent, uh, for the single, seventy-five percent family, twenty-five percent for the employee under a family coverage, uh, expecting five percent for work comp and then ten percent for liability and property. Uh, workers' comp, liability, property are all covered through, uh, the League of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust.
After looking at the insurance that was coming through the last year and the numbers, like you said, that makes twelve look good, um, Doug, this is one area where I am happy to, to look at, and this is again my comment, um, a, an employee package that is competitive so that we have employees who want to come here and stay here. Um, so to me, it, the insurance part of, of any job package is pretty important. So, um, that twelve percent i- isn't bothersome for me at this point.
Uh, then, you know, other employee-related items, the draft 2020 budget reflects an across-the-board pay increase for full-time employees, both union and non-union. You'll get at the, the union agreement, uh, at your regular meeting, but about three point two five percent. Pending approval, the new collective bargaining agreement would be effective January one of 2020. Kind of an aggressive plan here, but, um, we've been struggling, um, and we're about to lose some kind of what I'd call seasonal workers that we've had on a regular basis just because of some turnover. But we've had very light amounts of applicants for these positions and as it relates to the, the intensity of the labor that they're doing, um, I think we're well below market on what we're offering. And so wanted to make a, a significant pay increase from around what we're averaging around twelve fifty to fourteen dollars in the hopes of strengthening applicant, the applicant, applicant pool going into 2020. Uh, recreation services agreement, so we've kind of covered this in the previous agenda item. I, I have allocated the fifty-one two fifty, which we've, uh, previously paid, uh, in past years to the, the city of Chaska. Uh, some new slides that we, that we included this year, just to kind of give you a flavor for the process and then also open up an opportunity for the council to discuss, uh, areas that maybe you want to see changes. So these are areas, uh, that are not included in the draft budget. So as it relates to pavement management plan, in order to kind of get a sense of where streets should, uh, be repaired and what that looks like as it relates to milling and overlay or maybe a crack fill. One of the processes is developing a plan where, uh, we send out a crew to grade each street and there's, they look at different, uh, ooh, we lost actually. Pothole repair. Although we'll send out a crew to, to grade each street that's prepared in a report and it really provides a, an, a great overview for not just staff to look at, but it gives the council, um, an idea of, of where we're sitting from an infrastructure standpoint. And so we've, like I said before, have done a lot of heavy lifting as it relates to reconstruct. And now we're gonna be moving in more into maintenance. And when you get into maintenance, the threshold and the city has stayed away from it in large part, but there's a really high threshold for assessing maintenance costs. And some would even say you should stay away from it. I know cities, some cities do it. The city of Carver doesn't have a history of assessing a milling and overlay project. As the city attorney would say, it gets really dicey when you start to try to do that and show a benefit to that of improving the property value. Is that fair to say? Yeah. I waited for Larry to come in, timed it perfectly. So in order, and that's what I kind of, kind of hit home early in one of the earlier slides is trying to developing a strategy, because sixty thousand dollars is not, is frankly not going to get you a lot as it relates to a milling and overlay project. So you can see that next item down is trying to add to that sixty thousand dollar budget. Public services is consistently or typically requested about twenty-eight thousand, five hundred for what I'd call smaller capital purchases, uh, vehicle replacement, small lawnmowers, et cetera, um, in consideration of where we're at on budget. And then the equipment certificate, that was not included. Same goes for the Fire Department, they have a capital fund, uh, that was not included. One of the things that's gonna be a, an ongoing issue, and I think we're gonna get a sneak peek into that through the balance of 2019 is custodial support. Uh, opening up a new building like that is great, but there is gonna be a lot more to clean. I did add some additional hours, um, in custodial, but at some point in order to frankly keep, you know, that as a consistent position and provide, um, guests to that building and other city facilities with the experience and the presentation that I think we expect, we're gonna probably have to invest in a full-time position. Lions Park Shelter improvements, there's basically the similar work that was done to the community shelter, community park shelter, uh, we had planned for, uh, for Lions Park. The internship program, we had run that for about two to three years, dropped that off just due to budget, uh, constraints. And then, uh, the Broadway Holiday Decorations, so the new section of Broadway north of Fourth Street, uh, we don't have holiday decorations for that section of Broadway and, uh, there are quite a few of our existing decorations that probably need to be upgraded just based on, uh, the length of time that they've been used. So this is just a snapshot, you could probably find a, a few more, but it gives you an idea of some of the things that were discussed, but ultimately didn't make it in, at least this current draft.
Brent, I'm gonna, can we, yep, thank you. Um, when it comes to the Lions Park Shelter and the holiday decorations, that may be something now that we're moving into a different fiscal year that the Lions could be approached about again. Um, I know when we talked to them about the decorations, um, they did not go for it last year, but they were also still, um, in the process of paying twenty-five thousand dollars towards the city hall. So now that that has, has gone through, that it may be something we can ask the Lions for again.
So some budget choices that have been included, if any of you are basketball fans and during March Madness, they have like the last four in, the last four out, so these are the, the ones that just made it into the bracket. Uh, so street maintenance fund, uh, Chaska Recreation Partnership, um, are ones that we've talked about considerably. The Evening Patrol, Sheriff's Office, um, Spring Cleanup, it's a wildly successful event, but it's twenty-two thousand dollars to the general fund. Uh, the Community Survey, uh, we're estimating to be fifteen thousand. Uh, JCP Corridor Landscape Plan, fifteen thousand, and inspections, technology upgrades as it relates to, um, digital plan review, um, submitting app, uh, building permit applications online. We're expecting that our new building official, she's got a lot of great experience as it relates to that, and so we want to, you know, give her the opportunity to be creative and upgrade our, our current systems. And again, this is just a snapshot, there's probably any number of items that when you review the long or the line item budget, you could say, well, what about this? This is just meant as a conversation starter. So as we get in, I know I'm getting close on time, uh, kind of the summary data, our general levy history, uh, based on our existing draft here, our current draft, that's a, on the general levy side, I don't remember if it's general levy, debt service levy, and then total. On the general levy side, uh, just over nine and a half percent, and you can see how we've tracked since 2016. On the total levy, uh, I think this is probably one of the more significant slides here. You can see where our general levy fits in, the debt service levy, which by resolution you've kind of agreed to pay that, those payments in our total levy. And then our increase year over year, we've been kind of steady, and then we've had, you know, pretty two significant pieces here, one related to the city hall and then, uh, the other related to our new debt service. And this is like, I think, an interesting dynamic because yes, the levy goes up, but the levy is only one part of the formula for how taxes are, um, what your taxes are. And so yes, you want to have a conservative number, but the big, another big input for that is what our taxable market value is, and I'll get to that in the next slide. Here you can see how our total levy history, uh, relates from 2016 into the current drafts. And then I've broken out some options here so you can get an idea of if you feel more comfortable at a different levy, uh, number, what it would take to get you there. So if you wanted to go up, what that would do, and then also going down. I, I didn't go below seven point five. Once you get to about six point five, that's what we need to, to fund our new debt service. Um, and so we obviously can go low, we just have to, would have to cut more out of the general levy side to do that. Uh, but again, this is kind of the big piece, so the number, the certified city levy, you know, that's the combination of the general levy and the debt levy. But the big piece is what you divide that number into. And so when we looked at values going up, we have new construction, so that's kind of like what I'd call like the good new value. So whatever you add to that will kind of dilute the property tax. But when you have overall value increases, so we have values in Carver going up by ten percent, you'll have a home that was valued at three hundred thousand dollars last year, their new value is gonna be three hundred and thirty-some thousand. So they're gonna end up paying more taxes, more in taxes, even though they're, um, even though they're, even though the rate might go down because the value has gone up. And so I'll, I'll get to that in these upcoming slides. Here you can see, this is from the county where we're at at new construction, and you can see how we got to the, the market value change. Getting into some rates and how we compare with other cities in Carver County. I think the, the, the best way to kind of explain this are these example calculations of property taxes. And so here you can see the, the pay nineteen using that rate. And again, so that's the levy divided into our total market value or taxable market value will get us that rate. So you take your capacity, multiply it by our local rate, and that ends up being your property taxes. This homestead exclusion is a, kind of a deep dive. If you want to get into that, I can invite the county assessor to come out one time and talk about how values are created and the calculations that they do. Uh, but there used to be a kind of a homestead credit and they've turned that into an exclusion. It can be somewhat complex and I'm not in a position right now to try to explain that to you, but this is right based on what they told me. So pay twenty, so you have a three hundred thousand dollar home, and this is an example of a home that is three hundred thousand dollars last year and three hundred thousand dollars this year. And that'll be, um, it could happen, but it'd be somewhat of an anomaly. And so you can see that comparison tax impact. In this instance, if your home didn't go up in any, with any val, of any value, and that cannot, that can be more than just the county assessing it higher. It could be that you finished your basement, uh, you made it an addition to your home, you added a third stall to your garage, all those items. Buckland?
It's seven o'clock.
Oh, I'm getting there. I thought you, never mind. Um, so this is an example of how that property value has gone up, so gone up by ten point seven percent. And so you can see the corresponding impact. And in this instance, uh, the property taxes have gone up by a hundred and forty-five dollars if your home went up by ten point seven percent in value. So this snuck in here just after seven, but gives you an idea of where we're at. If the council wants to stop now and continue the conversation during the regular meeting, you can do so.
I'm fine with continuing this. This is important, I think we should keep going. We can start the meeting from this slide.
So what we would like to do is get some initial feedback from the council on what you like, what you don't like. I've got a couple of things that you asked for that we can prepare for the, your next work session.
So the one thing that came to mind, um, that I don't think I see in here, but is a continuation of our work with WSB on the levy.
Right. So that would be under our enterprise fund, so we won't include that in. Right, so that would be under our enterprise fund, so we won't include that in, in this area.
Okay, good. I have nothing.
So for the enterprise funds, when will we know what the changes will be for 2020?
So Heather is going to prepare a 2020 work plan with a corresponding cost. So I should have that probably within the next two weeks.
Okay.
And then we'll integrate that into the, but 2020 proposed budget for the Stormwater Fund.
Okay, will we approve the budgets at the same time?
Yeah, you'll approve all, all the budgets as a collective at your last meeting in December. Because we've, we focused the first part of the process on the general fund, since you have to set the preliminary levy by the end of September.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, but it's good to think about the whole impact to our.
We will have the enterprise fund budgets ready for you toward the end of September, early October.
Okay. Is the line item for included in the budgets for street maintenance, is that an increase?
It's the same.
It's the same amount.
Right. And one of our, if you go back to a past council meeting, our new funding strategy for that is to have that be a transfer. So you're going to fund it in the general fund, and then it's going to be, once the budget's adopted, immediately transferred into a street maintenance fund?
Oh, right.
So that if dollar, if the money isn't all spent, it doesn't roll over back into the general fund. It'll stay in that general, or the street maintenance fund year over year.
I remember that now.
Brent, can you remind me of the community survey? What, what are the outcomes we're hoping for from that?
So that'll be secondary outcome, so you won't, so the, I think, from recollection, it's, could be up to like 100 questions, but you'll, it'll essentially provide staff and the council with how folks may feel about affordable housing or park services or how we're doing on snow plowing or how our communication is in the, any number of questions, how they, what their feelings are on the future of transit. And so we'll, we end up using that information as a tool to inform us on policy decisions or budgets or engagement strategies. So it's, it's a one-off in that it's not, you cut your arm and you put a Band-Aid on it. There's a solution right there. It's a, you're going to use it as a means to help you prevent from getting cut. That's an analogy too far.
That's a great one. Thank you.
So it's, it's one of the things that was in the last strategic plan. We didn't get to it. It's in this current one. It's a kind of a philosophy of, we want the residents to tell us what they're thinking as opposed to us assuming. One of the things we've talked about at a staff level is sometimes we feel like we overcompensate for the feedback that we get on social media. And so this is a way to get at residents that we don't connect with on a regular basis and what they're thinking as a collective, as opposed to maybe a, a smaller group that we hear from on maybe a more consistent basis.
I'm, I'm just wondering if we're going to hear from that same smaller group and not from another one, so.
So the, this is a, they do a phone survey, and it's randomized. So it's not, they, they have their staff comes out, and we'll get a better picture of this at your September work session. But it, it's not something where everyone fills out a form. It's, it's going to be pretty random, so it, it won't get at what you're talking about. Or it will get at not having the same people respond.
Any other questions, comments? No? All right. Thank you. I think in the interest of time, we'll do the city manager's report during the regular meeting.
Make a motion to close the work session.
So we have a motion to adjourn from council member Henry.
A second.
And a second from council member Mock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.